For silence your cell phones and join in the pledge.
My pledge is to the students and of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please, Barry.
Is there any public comment? Of additions or deletions? Okay. How about additions and deletions?
Yes. I have one addition, ARPA funds discussion from yesterday, and a deletion of match for Oregon Department of Parks and Recreation for our interaction with that yesterday.
That's for the ski. Oh, yeah. Good luck to our three honkers.
That's cool.
Yeah, what is it, nine thirty at night?
Eight fifteen. You in Pendleton? Get a long drive today.
Yeah, three hundred and thirty some odd miles.
Good luck to them. So. Do we want to go ahead and have our ARPA discussion since it's run or do we wait? Whatever you want to do.
Morning, Mary. How you doing? Good.
Whatever you want to do.
Let's, let's go ahead and let's talk about this. Yesterday, we moved five hundred thousand of the rescue front funds to the North Lakeview Water Project. I talked to our board, the fair board, um, last night about it. Representative Bowens is supposed to have a significant amount coming into the fairgrounds in his district, which I'm very thankful for. And let's go ahead because Schoed was working on getting the money to fairgrounds now they have to change and get the money to Lakeview Water Project, Lakeview Water Project, so I'll be in contact with Commissioner Schellenberger on that. Do we want to talk about how we're moving those funds around too? So.
Um, in terms of, so you asked yesterday to move the five hundred thousand that was originally slated for the fairgrounds, um, to move that, split it up, and, uh, move a piece to, uh, Paisley Water. You, you took, you wanted to take it out, sorry, excuse me, yeah, you wanted to move that to the North Lakeview Water Extension Project.
I'm gonna take that five hundred.
And free a five hundred thousand out of, I guess, Wyden's money, um, or Lethicum's, whichever color, I, I suppose. And you want to distribute that to both Paisley and the Christmas Valley Water Projects.
Correct.
Okay.
So that would bring Paisley up to five hundred thousand, correct?
Yes, and what I've got, what I've got here on CB Water is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand ninety dollars to CB Water and, uh, basically, uh, one fifty, three fifty split.
So nine twenty-one.
Nine twenty-one, ninety.
I'll be good with that.
Yeah, you know, uh, so we have one point five, we will have one point five, we have seven hundred and fifty thousand right now of Wyden money. We get another seven hundred and fifty thousand for one point five. Uh, rescue money, it's five hundred thousand, that has to be spent in his district, that was one of his asks. And then Lethicum with seven hundred thousand. You total the three together, that's two point seven million. What I think we're proposing today is that we originally had consensus to use five hundred thousand of rescues to the fairgrounds and we would change that to North End Water Project for Lakeview. A five hundred thousand and then we could either take another five hundred thousand either from Lethicum or direct from, uh, Wyden for, uh, one million dollars for the North End Water Project. The remaining, uh, funding for the North End Water Project would hopefully come from business funding. Uh, that leaves, uh, either two hundred thousand of Lethicum and still a million dollars or upwards of a million dollars of Wyden's money for the Christmas Valley Water, Paisley Water, and childcare. Right?
Yep.
Well, with, with Christmas Valley and Paisley already, we kind of set what we're gonna do on them. Correct.
So. Do the math quick here. Just make sure it all adds up.
So why don't you?
Want me to clarify that?
Yes, please.
So just to clarify, we're getting one point five million dollars in direct ARPA funding. The Wyden money will come later in a separate pot for general government services. So that's coming in addition to the one point five, I just didn't want you guys, you guys any point of view?
The one point five is federal.
Federal, direct ARPA, that's not the Wyden money.
Sorry, excuse me.
What, I think that was a common trend that you guys were saying, I just wanted to.
Yeah.
So. So that's just the Paisley and Christmas Valley is one point four million.
Yep.
And change. Then we're looking at a million for North Lake Water, so that puts us up to two point four. So we have about three hundred, just shy of three hundred thousand. Left. Correct? Well, we moved the rescue, so we have to, yeah, that, that's still the same, so.
Well. If we're only deciding on North End Water today, uh, we're asking for one million dollars, five hundred thousand from rescue and five hundred thousand either from Lethicum or direct. That leaves one point seven million, basically. Minus HEPA filters that we've already bought and ski hill money that we just decided on.
Correct.
Or actually.
Well, I think we're gonna use Wyden money for the ski hill.
Okay.
Yeah, and we haven't, we still have that from that resolution.
Gives a little more money than for water. Okay, so there's at least one point seven left. Still to distribute between CB, Christmas Valley Water, Paisley Water, and childcare. We had also considered broadband and we heard a proposal for an agency.
So let's, let's finalize the North Lake Water Project, North Lakeview Water Project. And then, do these can get to work on that, let's go ahead. And so do you guys want to make a motion?
Um, just before I make any motion or before Barry makes a motion, just so we have all the info. We have several options with the other portion of that million, that five hundred thousand. Do we want to use direct or do we want to use Lethicum's line for that? I was thinking Lethicum's would be good.
Yeah, let's use Lethicum.
Yeah.
Let's use five hundred thousand rescue, five hundred thousand Lethicum.
Right.
How's that? Does that work?
Okay.
That leaves two hundred thousand of Lethicum, uh, to be distributed to some, or, or two fifty. I think it's only seven hundred.
So, so.
No, you're right. Okay, sorry, I had seven fifty on my mind. I don't know why seven fifty keeps popping in my head. It's seven, it's seven hundred, I think, that we were getting from Lethicum. I just, I don't know why seven fifty's on my mind, excuse me, sorry. So who do you want?
Sure, I'll make a motion to use, uh, rescue ARPA money of five hundred thousand and Lethicum ARPA money of five hundred thousand to go towards the North End Lakeview Water Project.
Second.
Motion been made second, if we want to prove a discussion on that.
Only, uh, only discussion would be, for some reason, if I can't imagine what it would be, swapping out Lethicum money for direct money, but, uh, I think we just keep with the plan of rescue, Lethicum money for the North End Water.
Well, and I suppose just jumping onto that, the other thing that we might want to consider is the fact that that one million isn't enough to build the entire project, and yeah, we have other options on the table, but, I mean, just.
If we need another two hundred or three hundred thousand.
It's.
We might be adding to that.
Correct.
If that other one doesn't come through.
Right.
Hopefully that's not the case.
Right, correct. Okay.
Well, this has been made second, and all favors say aye.
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 All right.
Then, uh, we will give out more money as folks are ready, I guess.
Yeah.
On my ear from Paisley and Christmas Valley, if they're ready.
Correct.
All right, so. Restored the justice grant program.
Not that Jake, I'm sure you're here, but, uh, you know, I wasn't, I'm not particularly comfortable or, um, satisfied with this grant proposal. I think, uh, you know, we, we definitely need some options and there's some good, good directions we could go. Um, we've had a vision and I think all of us kind of share it, but, um, I don't think this grant helps us. I think it's gonna cause more problems than it solves.
Yeah, I won't make a motion. So Ralph and Dennis.
Well, just, I mean, I would, I can make a motion to
I would keep working on that.
To deny or, you know, or just, um, there, there's not gonna be any decision made to approve it. I'm not sure if we need to make any kind of motion.
Resolution authori- authorizing application for the grant, for grant. Must be on rescue hill resolution.
So this is, yeah, the ski hill one.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-two dash one C.
Does this, this, does this need to be read into the record or anything? So this is in the matter of authorizing Lake County to apply for a local government grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department for a development and rehabilitation grant for Warner Canyon Ski Area and delegating authority to Fremont Highlanders to sign the application.
Keep your focus.
Oh, I finished.
Okay, I said.
Well, I, I, I didn't quite make a motion, but I just, I, I was giving the information on what the resolution was. But, uh, I will make a motion to approve the resolution twenty-two, uh, twenty, twenty-two dash zero one C.
Second.
Would you be moving second, if all the favors say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Letter of support for the Fremont Highlanders Ski Club for the grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, letter of support for the Fremont Highlander Ski Club as presented.
Um, I'll second that motion discussion. Just, I should have noticed this yesterday, um, the signature line, it's minor, it, it's fine as it is, but, uh, under the actual commissioners, it doesn't give title, it just says position one, two, and three. We put typically on these letters, we say Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioner. So.
So accept it with those changes?
Yeah, if, if the commissioner wants to amend this one. Okay.
All favors say aye.
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 Meeting minutes for February fifteenth work session, February sixteenth regular session, February twenty-second special session.
Chair, I will go ahead and make a motion to approve, uh, February fifteenth, the minutes, uh, for the work session from February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, regular session minutes from February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the special session minutes from February twenty-second, two thousand twenty-two.
All second?
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you want to do your paper?
Your word? Where do you want me?
Right up front.
Oh, yay. Okay.
You can, you can stand or you can sit, whatever you want to do.
Oh, I'll stand. Um, so since I took over November twenty-third, I have been.
Jim, you want to state your name?
No, not really, okay. Um, I am Jim Antle, I took over as a veteran service officer on November twenty-third. Um, so since then, I've been doing a whole lot of training, um, a lot to learn, um, and what, yeah, December was kind of slow with holidays and I got my formal training from the state in January. The second week of January, we finally got through that training. So since then, um, I've been to Christmas Valley a couple of times, I've spent a lot of time in the office, um, one, trying to get through a whole lot of manuals and also to try to get to know our veterans. I've met with, um, approximately fifty-five different veterans for a total of about a hundred and forty visits. We filed for twenty-five new claims thus far and, um, we've appealed three different claims, um, which has been pretty informative. Um, it's been very interesting, um, just seeing the differences in how all of our, the differences in our veterans and, and the difference of how claims are dealt with in various offices. So I've been able to work with Clement Falls as well as our trainers, um, based out of the Salem area. So I'm just kind of trying to get through that training and get through my accreditation process, which could take up to a year, but my goal is to try to expedite that and get my accreditation in six to nine months. It's doable, I think, so, so we're not.
Good.
You guys?
Fifty-five people, that's awesome.
Yeah, I think some of it in the beginning was a lot of curiosity factor, they wanted to get to know who, who that in person is. Um, I'm, I'm good with that, that's, they need to know who I am and where I'm at, so, yeah.
It's good, it's really good.
Any questions?
How are things going on in the North End? You said you were up there several times?
Pretty good, um, I'm actually, uh, I've had quite a few veterans come in. Mondays seem to be a challenge, um, people, they're, oh, I'm gonna come see you and then, or they're, they schedule and then they don't show up. So I think I'm actually looking to maybe change that date to, and I'm starting to see more calls and, and meetings that I'm scheduled for with ODVA and stuff. So I think I'm looking to change that to a Wednesday.
Yeah.
Um, that way I can schedule a call on Tuesday to remind and then go up on Wednesday. Um, yeah, so I think I'm, I'm gonna look to that in a couple of weeks and get that published. Um, I've also started, um, just something I forgot about, one, I have a Facebook page that I try to put information out for those that are on Facebook. And I've started, in addition to the Veterans Transportation ad, the next week we have Veterans Corner, so it's a little bit bigger ad and I'm starting to highlight things that are coming up with the VA, like right now, we've got the presumptives for our, um, Asian theater. So they're opening new claims up, there's some new stuff that's coming out and that's where I'm gonna be putting that in the newspaper so that we can get that word out a little more readily, um, and get that out. So if people have claims or questions or issues, it's easier for them to get that information.
Good, excellent.
And that North Lake you mean to have, uh, annexed a little?
Yeah, you'll find, you'll find dates that work better for you. Mondays are a hard day to be out of the office.
Yeah, that's when I'm fighting.
Because there's always that catch-up and everything that you're always having to do on Monday morning.
Right, yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, but I think, I think it's gonna cha- transition to Wednesday, if anyone try that one.
Right, and see how it works with them and everything else, you know? See what best works.
It's good. Is there anything that we can do as a board to help you?
Not that I can think of right now, things seem to be going very well and, yeah.
You liking it?
I do, I really like it. It's been, it's been really fun to get to know the veterans that I've, I've worked with thus far. Um, and just, and, uh, using that legal background that I do have, um, has been, just in the few claims that I've been working on, appeals with, um, it's helped a lot, so, yeah, I really enjoy it. Yeah.
Thank you very much.
We're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Yeah, great, good update.
Ten minutes, we're so efficient.
Uh, no, I need to do an ODA grant update.
So the Wolf Depredation Compensation Committee submitted our grant last week for the yearly depredation funds. We applied for fifteen hundred dollars just to kind of keep a place marker. As many of you know, there's been an uptick in wolf, wolf activity. Um, they just federally relisted the gray wolf, so that's going to be interesting for our committee. But I just wanted to let you guys know that we did get the grants submitted.
Okay.
Thanks for that number. Do you want him up to state level, diet?
Yeah, so.
I'm trying to.
Yeah, this is, I, I wasn't part of those meetings, but you kind of gave me a great update, kind of on where it's been brought. And I know John Mirror was working on those things and a lot of the local, um, work that was being done is kind of off the table right now.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know if you wanted to give a little update from what you're seeing on your perspective of that? And how this hurts us with the judge's decision in California?
Well. So our area, uh, of Lake County was not, uh, of course, the wolf was not protected and it's, and then when the Californian judge made that, uh, change, now we are under a protected area. So that affects the work that was being done on the troubled wolves. We got a pair that's, uh, uh, killed a heifer in Summer Lake and then also was tied to killing a, uh, a couple head of cattle there at Y. So we were within one more, uh, incident of being able to take action against, potentially take action against these wolves. So this is a bit of a setback, we'll have to see how it goes, but, uh, John Mirror, the ODFW team person is, is doing a great job. These, this pair, they are collared and, uh, we'll keep a good track of what they're doing. Ranchers in the area are totally aware of what's going on. Good.
So Commissioners, I want to bring up something, Jim kind of sparked my memory on the annex in North Lake County. Do we want to have a set date for when Jim goes up, when Darwin goes up, when Jason or Kenny are up there, so people can actually meet them in that office? I realized that it would work better for them to set the dates, but the problem with that is that we need to make it clear to the people who are at North Lake when they can get service for planning, building, nuisance, veterans, commissioners, um.
Just a thought on that, um, because, you know, like Jim's saying, she's still just trying to kind of work out what a new schedule would look like and I definitely want her to be able to pick a schedule that also works for the veterans up there. Maybe what we could ask for from our department heads is that they give us the dates, you know, within the next, you know, couple months or, you know, whenever as to what works for them and then we can formalize that, you know, with the decision. But they can.
They can set the date and then we can tell the people.
And that way we can form, we can formally. Yeah.
I think it's mainly just not knowing.
Yeah. Right, and then that helps us because we're talking with people and everything, we can, we can get that information kind of flowing through, but we can get it from the department heads to us and to what best works for their service.
Does that work for you, Jason and Jim?
Sure.
Nice. There's still work that needs to be done on the annex.
Oh, yeah. Uh, we'll, we'll take this back to vacation, we need to have a sit-down with them.
Go over some things, yeah.
Because we need carpeting, uh, we need paint.
He was diligently painting last week when I was there.
Does the key card work now?
Yes, actually.
I was there on Monday and I tried out my key card and everything and it was working, but, uh, so. Yeah, I think, you know, it, it's difficult when you're dealing with an old house, remodeling it into a formal county building. There's definitely some issues and we just need to kind of address those as they come.
Oh, like if they moved your cabinet, the carpet.
Yeah, the carpet.
There was no carpet under it, so.
Yeah. No one ever moved any of the furniture when they laid the carpet, they just cut the carpet around.
And one of those rooms is this color.
Yeah, so.
Anyways.
Yeah, we'll, we'll deal with that as we go, but very good observation, we do need to make some investments in that building.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and open the hearing for ordinance number one sixteen.
So. I did have something on ordinance one sixteen that you've got that open now. Did you want to ask if there's any public comment first before I go into anything?
Is there any public comment on ordinance one sixteen, which is our nuisance control ordinance?
Uh, my name is Craig Lanu, I'm a, uh, current resident of Lake County, Oregon. During the last meeting in February, I forget the date, I want to say two weeks ago, I received a draft of the Nuisance Control Ordinance one-one-six and I just looked at it as a disinterested third-party citizen and came up with a few items I think should be addressed before we finalize this.
May happen.
Such as referring to the, the, uh, Lake County urban growth boundary, is this just for Lake County? Is it just for the urban growth bounty, if it is, every which urban growth bounty? And then the most pressing one was referring to a department, a department head that does not exist, the, uh, the director of community development. So that's all and if I came today, if you have any questions or my observations on here, answer questions.
Um, so I do believe that those two items have been addressed. Um, can you point, just to make sure and clarify though, do you have, it's marked anywhere on that sheet exactly where those items were?
I gave a copy to Mr. Schellenberger last week and I gave a copy to, yeah, to Jason.
Okay, so Jason's nodding his head that he took care of those.
Right.
Okay, so.
And I, and I believe you and, you know, it's up to you to, to do with as you please, but you're. And I, and I believe you and you know, it's up to you to to do with as you please, because it's your document. But as a disent, I just.
Sounds good.
Wouldn't think that we'd wanna put out something that's an immediate date of revision that we can't do for six months.
Right. Appreciate that.
No problem.
Make sure maybe we can ask Jason to cover and just cover the. Changes.
Yeah, so I went through that as well, a couple of department head changes in there to make sure the titles were correct. Um, the original version had, um, had referred to some titles incorrectly. So I went through to make sure every either department head or authority is given to the title as it's listed in the county. Um, so that there's no confusion on that, as well as a couple of little, little corrections concerning, um, some issues that were brought up. Uh, clarifying all the language since the urban growth boundaries, I just removed all the language for that because only. For the, for the Lake View, Lake County website, the only urban about bound, uh, growth boundary that's clearly shown is around Lakeview. And since residents don't have a clear definition of where the Paisley, Christmas Valley, et cetera is shown on there, I just took the language out. And made sure that it clarifies Lake County, um, and there wasn't really much that was affected by the urban growth boundary language. It was just a matter of don't, not blocking roads and whatnot, so there wasn't anything crucial that needed to be defined.
Right.
Actually, we found a uh, updated year that uh.
Yeah.
Copyright.
Yes.
Nineteen ninety-seven versus nineteen eighty-two.
Yeah.
Well, I've reviewed the changes. I think it's a good.
Yeah, the uh, so I, I noted under, um, specific nuisances. Um, there's re- remarks under section one where it says, um, where talks about public roads. Right of ways adjacent there too, and then I went under section T and I shared this with my county, the county road superintendent.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Kevin got back to me under T, it says, except as authority. Except as authorized by the appropriate governing body, the overflow, seepage or discharge of water from adjacent land. Onto a public road outside of an incorporated city, including but not limited to water. Uh, that is passing over the land diverted from the land by obstruction on the land, discharge, irrigation sprinkler or other device. I kind of talked about this with Kevin and he uh, he really appreciated that.
Consortium twenty-three.
It it is, yeah, so it it helps get us into alignment with ordinance three and uh, which is a water waste ordinance. That we have, so that may fall under, because it's now a nuisance.
Mm-hmm.
You may be getting tagged on some of those things, so just wanted to kind of bring that to the forefront. I really appreciated that being in here and bringing us closer into alignment with twenty-three.
Yeah.
Because as, um, our road superintendent has explained to us before, that water on pavement tears the heck out of our rooms.
It's very damaging to the road.
It's the oil out and takes years off the life expectancy.
Uh, one of the things I did include in the final revision, since there's really no middleman between myself and the commissioners. Most of the, um, decisions and authorities are either at my office, at the code enforcement officer. Or to the commissioners. I tried to put as much to the commissioners as was feasible. So as not to allow this position to be, whether it's myself or the next code enforcement officer, to be able to essentially abuse the authority. I wanted to make sure that there was only the minimal necessary authority in this position to prevent any abuse of the position now or in the future. So, since there is no administrative officer between myself and the commissioners, um, a lot of higher level decisions go straight to commissioners. Just because I did not feel that it was appropriate for the code enforcement officer to have too much authority in certain matters. So I wanted to make sure that position couldn't be abused. Um, if I missed any language in there that you feel does not belong to the enforcement officer. I will certainly uh, revise it, or if in the next six months we find that there's an authority that should not be in my position. Uh, we'll revise it then, but I just wanted to put that on record as well, that trying to keep this position from a place where it can be abused.
Right, no, and most of that language is under, um, section one hundred administration and enforcement. And I, I thought it was written very well.
Okay.
Appreciate you.
Compliance hearing officer.
Yeah.
So that is specific to building code issues, so it's not gonna be uh, anything under the nuisance ordinance or camping. Uh, the ordinance thirty-nine or even uh, twenty-three, like you mentioned, it's specific to. Uh, whether it's a owner builder or a contractor is building a structure. And they come in violation of building code, before we can uh, give any financial violations to them. There has to be a compliance hearing officer, a neutral party to hear both sides of it and determine. If we can proceed with any kind of uh, violations, uh, citations. Uh, we do have somebody in Klamath who has volunteered for that. They are well versed in building code and it's a, going to be a retiring. Um, code enforcement officer up there, so his availability will be relatively soon. And we have nobody at the moment with the need of a compliance hearing officer, so the timeline fits for now. Um, but he's qualified for the job, he's not resident of the county, he has no personal interest one way or the other. So he, and he's already, um, put out that he'd be willing to do it.
Okay. A good neutral party to be able to mediate.
Mm-hmm.
And if for some reason, uh, he weren't available, he's said he can, we can uh. Contact the, the compliance hearings officers that Klamath has as well. Um, we do have that, that option, but it shouldn't come to that, we have somebody who's very sensible to it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the board or the public? Ordinance one sixteen. Thank you for all your work on that, man.
Yeah, I appreciate it very much.
So I guess we can close the hearing.
Is there anything from the town? Thank you.
Any other updates before I close?
Nope, I have nothing. Lot of good work. Um, did you? Yeah, we had, did we close the hearing yet?
I haven't.
Okay, whenever you close the hearing.
Okay, making sure of that. So we'll close the hearing for ordinance number one sixteen at ten thirty-eight. And do I have a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion for ordinance to accept ordinance one sixteen nuisance control. Um, with the updates as presented.
I'll second.
Been being seconded, any other further discussion? All favor say aye.
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 Long time coming, I've been huge proponent. Thank you for everybody that's worked on it.
We did everything, so we're good there.
You know, we'll close the meeting at ten thirty-nine.
Alright.
Thank you guys.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you need me to just one cup?
I have a cup.
I just wanted to be a shoulder cup.
Well, I can get the, I've got the finalized, so you can. I sent it to you yesterday.
But I named my consistent.
You should keep it.
And then, can we all still on that group three for you? I got another battery.